All right, call for an proceeding to order, step forward the pledge of allegiance please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, roll call please.
Edward Keller.
Um, excused and absent.
Whitey Simon, here. Christine Holcomb.
Excused and absent.
Harold Dane, here. Mark Oshard, here. Tom Cozel, here. Robert Dusney.
Excused and absent.
Keith Bell, here. And Kathy A. Schweitzer.
I'm here.
Thank you ma'am.
Item number four, amendments to agenda. Hearing none. Correct. We'll move on to item number five, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve as presented, the minutes of April 24th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed, no. So approved. Item number six is new business, which we have none, so we're gonna move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business, which we have four items, and I'm gonna turn it over to the planners for this. How's that?
What is the first one?
Oh, for, didn't you read the agenda?
Compost.
Composting.
I did, I have my stuff, I just don't want to be...
I'm just a rascal. Come on. It would be compost, dude.
No, that was always more...
Sorry, now, if you ever have your...
This is something we've talked about once before so far, and we received unlimited direction from you, so it's something we're bringing back, it's just a discussion item again. The primary standard we're focusing on related to composting is the minimum size that's required for facility. Your standards were 80 acres, we've compared...
Can I stop right now? Is there a way to turn the mic up? I can't hear anything.
Hello, are test... Hello, hello? Is that better? No?
Not really.
We need some...
I can hear it here, but we can't hear hardly up here.
Do you know anything?
Testing, testing, testing.
Could I make a request, since you're here and you're... Sorry, did you hear copies already? I have copies already. We have more difficulties, and I don't know in other board meetings that they have difficulties, but we have problems. It seems like we never can get anybody here, whether it's them or us. Can you?
This is working.
There's another one there.
Yeah, we don't have a...
All right, yell it.
Lower.
So we're looking at the minimum acreage for composting facilities. On page three, we have some comparisons from other communities. Armada is 20 acres. Bruce does not have a minimum requirement. Same with Casco and Chesterfield in Chinatownship. Columbus is 20 acres, Ira's 20 acres, and Shelby's 20 acres. So you do have, composting standards are pretty substantial in the zoning ordinance now, where we're not suggesting to delete any of those or modify those substantially. But with our recommendation to reduce state bridge requirement, we've added some additional measures on odor. In other communities that we've worked in, Casco Township, there were some odor issues with the composting facility there, and the solution they found was to have a composting expert come and investigate the site, and they found that the initial blending of grass and the other items that go into the mulch, if that's done on a pavement surface, that reduces the odor significantly. So we've added a language related to that, that you'll see on the draft ordinance in the red underlined text. So this is just, again, another discussion meeting. You'd eventually need to set a public hearing if you wanted to consider an ordinance, but this is just for discussion purposes.
A question. Of the cited examples, how many of these municipalities actually do have composting facilities? Do you know?
I don't know, we could find that out, though.
Be interesting to find out. I mean, it's one thing to say you have an ordinance if you don't have anything to apply the ordinance to. Right, I'd like to know the residential around there, to the distance between the houses.
If there's a composting...
If there's a composting facility there, because I know what this is gonna smell like, and I mean, you can put all the perfume you want, I know what's gonna come up with this.
Sure. We'll look into that.
Because you've, I'm sorry, Mark, you've changed it from 1,200 to 1,500 to 200 to 250, and that seems awful close.
Well, I remember driving through that area where they had some, and there were a lot of signs pointing to the odor that was coming off of there. But besides that, what I did, I computed the square footage of a 15-acre site and of a 20-acre site, and then I looked at what we had done. If we were to look at 15 acres or 20 acres, the 15 acres would be leaving 18% of what we have now. The 20 acres would leave, obviously, a quarter, and if we go to 15, certainly the distance ought to be at least 225 or more, and if we went to 20 acres, if we believe that the original intent was reasonable when they put these numbers in there, if we were at 20 acres, maybe we ought to be at 300 foot from all these nice areas. And then, I guess, I really don't know how, when you have a 15, 20, 30 acre piece of property and you start composting, I would suspect that you start one pile, when it gets high enough, you go to the next pile, and you move that first one after it's properly composted, and hopefully you sell it. So they start moving these things all over that acreage, and I just wonder whether we can find out how that is operated.
Right, with what Whitey says, what I'd like to see is setbacks as far as the actual composite pile from the property line, and I'd also like to see the dimensions and make it a standard dimension. You say, so we say 15 acres is that, you know, what's the frontage? Should have a standard set up for that. You know, because you can have 15 acres with 50-foot frontage and it goes all the way back, you know, 700 yards, whatever the case may be, so we need to establish a standard on that as well.
That's why I took the square footage and found the distance of each leg if it were a square, and that seems to be all right, but I don't think we have any square 15 acres or 20 acre properties in our region at all. You got one?
Three, two.
Square?
Almost square.
Now, that would be beautiful. That was the thing that concerned me, when you talked to about a 1,000 footer by a mile long, it would be difficult to have the 250, 300 feet from each residential area.
So you're saying proportionate size?
We ought to have a...
With a ratio, basically, width to depth, which would make sense.
I would like to see something like that, so that we don't wind up with a 1,000-foot piece of property running along a whole set of subdivisions.
Right. Maybe a 2 to 1 or 3 to 4 ratio.
I don't know. I asked the experts to see what we can find out, if we could look at those, whether there are any dimensional requirements on that 20-acre parcels that are defined in the various townships that we have here.
Sure, yeah, we'll look at those in those committees that are listed with the minimum acreage, we'll check on those items, if they have existing composting facilities, and what their residential setbacks are, if they have a facility. Do the mulch piles move around typically with a facility? And then, other lot standards that could be added with the 15-acre lot width and width-to-depth ratio, and then how narrow you could go to meet that setback in order to still have the...
In addition, when I looked at that last paragraph in red that you put down there, they're talking about compliance, what kind of an expertise do we have to have in the township to assure compliance with what we're gonna put in there?
The expert would be like a consultant that...
So we would have, the township would have to go to a consultant?
For the second item, for them to pursue enforcement, it would be, a consultant, they would have to...
Are they expensive?
I would think that the cost could be passed on, it should be provided with the facility.
I understand that, but we don't wanna drive the cost up to where we can't have the business going to do something, you know, so we're...
I believe it's like the traffic study, how they pick a consultant and then it's sort of verified, or, you know, the scope is confirmed with our firm, and then the applicant would have to, would be the one to foot the bill.
And they would still have, there is no I-2 property currently, and they would still have to do the special exception, so at that point, either of those two points, it could be a discussion on if they're willing to do that, or if it's required.
The only reason I questioned it is because we've heard so much about enforcement and compliance, we need to be sure that that's in there.
Well, I'm just concerned that I'm spending $250,000 for a house, that there was no composting there, and it's like you're in Algenack, when you're sitting there in the waste treatment plant goes, I mean, whichever way the wind blows.
Well, if you have 80 acres right now, you can go ahead and do it too.
Yeah, well, you can hire a lot in 80 acres.
True, and I don't know whether you should have a berm to move it up or whatever.
We're giving them eight feet high right here, it says maximum compost material height is eight feet high. I mean...
That's a lot.
Yes, it is. It's more than I...
Yeah, I don't know. Have you come across any method of suppressing the odor through canopies or covering the pileup or anything like that?
I haven't. I know typically they're combustible, so I don't know that that would be something that would be done with the mulch piles, so...
You need water, probably.
Yeah, you need water.
So you need the rain to come in, so you don't wanna cover it.
Because even if you mulch wood chips or anything else, it starts steaming.
If we could find out some of those things, maybe we can make a better informed decision.
Sure.
I can't, because I don't know how you operate, how you put these piles in there, and as Mark said, if you have an odd-shaped piece, we probably should say something about that, too.
Are we gonna be taking just township waste, or are we gonna be taking it from like everybody?
From Canada. They pay better.
Let it go.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I mean, we're gonna truck it in from Chesterfield or something, because I don't...
Well, this is the discussion right now, Matt's just, he's, excuse me, not Matt, Eric, is looking for direction, because this is what he gave us.
And I'm giving them direction, I wonder what really are we gonna do over there? I mean, just because it's composting, I'm used...
Yeah, we'll have some more case studies from those other communities to give you an idea of how they work.
That's what, exactly. Why did we come down to 15 acres and everybody else is 20? I mean, isn't just...
Most of your sites are under 20 that are industrial now, so generally with zoning, you have to have a path to allow a use.
Right, but I understand it totally, but it's just...
Any other questions you want for us answered? I guess you need some more research, and at the next meeting, we'll see where we go from there, because this is a discussion to see if we're gonna do anything. Oh, correct?
Yes.
Right, I think it's right here. That's what I was just looking at, yeah. So you can't... Do we need a motion to propose round to the table?
No, this is just a discussion right now, we don't need a motion.
Continued old business, right?
It's just a... But thank you for asking the question, because I don't have any more stuff. I'm okay with that.
And these standards also that are in here are just a summary, it's not the full text of this ordinance, it's a dumbed-down version of the meeting.
And I saw the isolations, distances in feet, yard waste, composting isolation distances feet, and they don't seem to be too large either.
On your chart?
On the chart, yeah. Are those federal standards?
This is the state, it's related to the state registry that the composting facility, and that's, this guided the setbacks that we proposed, though we didn't go under these. So right now, you're substantially over them with the 1,200 and the 1,500, so you have flexibility with what you require in addition to what the state requires.
Hi, Ed, how are you?
Okay, may I interject something?
Sure.
Not to distract from the meeting itself, but my apologies to the commission and to the public for what happened late into the meeting. Was, I was just off schedule.
That's okay, we're glad you're here, that's fine. Welcome. Later not, we know you're here now, thank you. Well, if there's more discussion regarding item A on your composting for unfinished business, we can move on, if the board is okay with it, to item B, which is outdoor storage shipping containers.
We talked about this in January, and the discussion in January, we got a couple of items, and then we looked into what container size variations there were. Altering the time limit, we proposed at that time to allow up to 30 days, notice enforcement and permitting requirements, how these storage containers should be used related to homeowner construction, and then deleting some language that was in the draft proposal. So the zoning ordinance currently regulates accessory structure, so it would not be a substantial amount of changes that would be needed to address these. You'd obviously need a definition to address the use, and then you can provide the standards for those accessory structures as you desire. On the second and third pages are some sample size variations from companies that you can rent or buy these shipping containers from. As you can see, they vary slightly, depending on who your provider is. We've talked about the pods, and those are on there. Those are, generally, the opening is about eight feet by eight feet square, and then the length obviously can vary substantially. And so on the last page is the sample language we saw in January, updated with the discussion items from January, as far as removal within 48 hours of the final inspection on the primary residential structure, and the maximum 30 days that you could have the structure. So that's the language we're showing at this time, it's not an ordinance format, so we can continue to look at this language as, with your direction.
Well, I hate to bring this up, but...
So these are, I'm sorry.
Considering our water issue right now, the meeting I attended on Monday, there was a suggestion people get storage pods and place them in their yard to get, or somewhere, to get the other stuff out of garages getting wet, so...
And it wouldn't get wet in the pod?
I don't know, I think they're trying to say just take them to a place else and raise them up, I'm not sure exactly.
They said to order the pods and move them to higher grounds.
Higher ground, unfortunately, I could see a homeowner saying higher ground's over there on my property, maybe. Just pointing out, we have a little difficulty maybe in that one right now.
That could also be configured into special circumstance.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
Under emergency or something.
Yeah, floodwaters.
Well, they might float away.
True.
I guess a question came up in my mind, that we have the high water, and my son has to put that stuff into a pod, and he brings it to my house, and we store it, and the house is destroyed, and now he's waiting to find a place to live. How long are we gonna keep it in my house?
30 days.
30 days.
30 days. At that point, 30 days may not be enough to repair your house or somebody else's house, if it is truly an emergency, so I don't know whether we need to put something like that in there, or whether that has to be, because I don't see where you should have to license a pod to put some stuff in to move. You put it in, it's like coming up with a pickup and throw it on the pickup and move it out, except that takes a lot more, so we should be able to have a pod without requiring a license, basically.
Why not? Because there's a pod that I know of that's been sitting there for two years, and it's on county property, and nobody's moved it yet.
County property?
Yeah. It's on the street, and nobody's moved it, it's been there two years.
Well, again, that's enforcement.
We need a timeframe.
Wouldn't it make sense to put in a, after the 30 days, due to special considerations, link it to another 15 or 30 day, based on qualifications as determined by the building department? How about you get a permit? Right, well, it's, well, we're supposed to get a permit.
Temporary.
Just get a longer one.
Well, you don't get a longer one, you gotta have 30 days, and you have to get a re-extension. Get an extension on the permit if necessary.
And I guess...
It'd cost him $200.
No. I guess it bothers me to put a, what is it, a 40-foot, nine-foot, six-inch-high container as a home-based business storage. I don't know about that.
No, hoping there's room with a bao-ist shed, 10 by 12.
10 by 12, exactly.
If you can run a home-based business out of a 10 by 12 shed, you're doing good.
I mean, that's where we have to be careful when we throw that in, if you can put it in a home-based business.
So it sounds like we're looking at flexibility, if you're under 30 days, maybe not requiring a permit or any...
I would think so.
Anything that, homeowner might not be where they need to get, but then if it's more long-term, over 30 days, then you need to pursue the permit with the building department. And then also, we can propose some lengths, some maximum length of the 40 feet is too long, make a cutoff that accommodates the pods and the U-Haul storage boxes, but wouldn't accommodate...
Are these the actual sizes of the pods?
There's a lot of variety. I tried to find as best I could for the companies that, the moving companies, I tried to find as good of them, but for the shipping containers, those vary depending on, so there's two.
So obviously, there has to be something here, because I'm seeing the 16 footer by eight by 16, pretty much, but the pod is not the same as a shipping container.
We would be treating them the same in the ordinance that they are.
Now, is there something for like semi-trailers? Because this thing a whole lot different, right?
Basically, you can wheel it on a semi-trailer.
So what can you do with a trailer today? Can you...
We don't really regulate vehicles, I mean, you couldn't, if it's parked on the right of way or things like that, it might not be something that zoning ordinance addresses. We could look at...
Couldn't park a business or something that needed for storage?
That's, that gets to be touchy, and if you look at these containers that somebody might wanna put on there, we have a lot of 40-foot lots around here, you put a 40-foot container on there...
Well, it's not just that, they got a container, I mean, you're only allowed one outbuilding technically by the codes, and I seen three or four outbuildings.
Oh, I'll build a, I'll build a more permanent or a pod.
I understand that, Mark, but I see shed, 10 by 12 sheds, and I see a pod right next to it, and I see another 10 by 12 shed over there. Your way. I mean, it's, we could get like...
Yeah, we talked about vehicles that are operable, there's things in the zoning ordinance related to that.
Some of them are axle.
This on...
I should see somebody wanting to do this, and you say no, and they go get a trailer and park it, and it's dead.
I think another challenge you would run into, I don't know if you recall, I think it was a year or two ago, we talked about the RV parking, and then issue with enforcement of, well, I moved it over the weekend and now it's back, you know, it's only been there for, you need put five consecutive days, so that, I think, Eric and I were just at a little sidebar, we're gonna look at the standards for, if we can include, you know, what can be included in that, to include operable vehicles, or number of axles, or things like that, to try to make sure that that's not the loophole, so...
I'm good with that.
What do you do when you have two doors like we have at the island side of the ferry, and you put that there, and now you have an accessory building without having an accessory building, right?
Do we have any thought to the maximum size of this, of what's gonna be allowed? Somebody's brought it up, and I missed it, I apologize.
We were discussing the 40 footers.
Well, it's a pod, or eight by 16, and then looking at some of these other ones, 40-foot containers, yeah, I mean... And I know you can use, you can actually call them a temporary building, put them on four center blocks, and hey, there you go, not floating around.
By the ferry, right?
No, that's not...
I think it's sitting on the ground, to be honest with you.
You know, when we started this, I thought we were talking about basically moving pods.
Yes.
Such as on page three, I didn't talk about... Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, we were gonna entertain the...
That was part of it, Mark.
Yeah.
Whether you can stack them or not, yes, you know.
Very separating, though, because I agree with what was just said. We had a discussion about pods.
Right.
And then we were having a discussion about this... Shipping containers, people are making homes out of them.
That's different.
This is not, this is, what we're looking at tonight is strictly a storage-type unit. So if that's the case, do we need to be careful with the language we use to label these units versus shipping containers or pods? Because if you look on websites, there are definitely two different categories, and I'm not trying to play with words, but maybe that's the difficulty we're having, if we were to stick with the word, say, for instance, pods, that size is gonna be smaller than a shipping container. It's, I'm just talking out loud, maybe...
No, I agree with that, I have your issue, I think it's just narrowed down.
What if we looked at permitting anything over 40 feet, then you would have to get a permit even for under 30 days? Because then you can still do a pod, but if somebody wanted to put a semi-trailer, then they'd have to get a permit, it'd be regulated as a storage.
Say they're emptying out their house and doing a massive remodel, and they need a 40-foot...
Yeah, then they would have to, they would have to come get a permit for something over 40 feet, and that way, you're allowing people to do smaller storage things, but if it's a big project that's gonna be long-term, at least there's some start date and end date and...
A regulation.
Yeah, you can provide provisions for extensions if construction's not done, but it seems like just to separate those, you could allow for pods under, you know, 39 and a half feet and under to be, just to draw it at 40, and then anything over that number, you'd have to get a permit for.
I'd almost like to see a lot of 39 and a half footers.
What?
I'd like a lot of 39.
All right, well, you picked the number, I was, for discussion purposes.
I'd like to see the number at 16, because looking at page three, that's your typical pod or pod-type unit size. Anything over that?
I think that's...
Anything over the permit.
Yep.
Anything over 16? 16 by eight, I guess we would call it.
16, which is just a little larger than a shed.
16 by eight by eight, you can do a cubic foot, anything over whatever that... Working right now, but if you have two of them, you're over the cubic feet, so you need a permit. That's why I would say...
Oh, I see, I see.
I think the idea is that the permit, would it be difficult, yeah, like you're saying, if you needed two, wouldn't it be like, you'd have to come to the planning commission, and go to the building department? Yeah, it would, it's not, so it's not like a huge ordeal, but...
It should be a very simple, not a very costly, I would think, process to get a permit.
Just whatever it costs you to process the permit.
Thank you.
20, 25?
No profit.
What?
No profit.
No, it's not a business.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's a community.
He works for our company.
Okay, so maybe we should, what do you, how about repeat what we're looking for on this? How's that? So we get this clear.
We'll throw some special emergency circumstances that the building department could use beyond 30 days for extensions, 15-day extensions or additional extensions when emergency situations occur, that could be natural disasters, whether, there's probably language in the ordinance already related to that. Talked about 40-foot long home-based business storage. We'll look into how semi-trailers are addressed in the zoning ordinance, just to provide that information, and then we settle on the 16-foot... settle on the sixteen-foot length for pods as permitted, permit anything over that.
Everybody okay with that?
Just as long as you look and see what other people have with regards to using it storage as a whole business, because there you no longer want the pod, most likely, you probably buy one of those containers and put it up there.
That's what I was thinking, there's gotta be some sort of agreement, you don't own these pods, you rent them, right?
You rent those.
The pods you rent, you can buy as a furniture, you can buy as a...
I don't think there's too much concern with the pod, because the company's in a lot of back.
Eventually.
Yeah, they're gonna come and get it.
But the thing with the pods...
You're gonna pay rent on it for as long as you have it, so...
Right now, there's, right now, they're doing a massive remodel on the house near me, and that pod, which I'm not complaining, I don't care, because I know what they're doing, it's been sitting there for probably a year.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm saying, there should be some sort of provision to say, because they're obviously doing this construction, I get that, so I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that not everything gets done in thirty days, by any means.
And I know of a case right now where the young lady is moving out of Plymouth Township, it's all in the pod, she is in Florida, and she's probably gonna spend six months to find a place to live, and she's got, I don't know where it's stored, probably in Florida someplace. So there are certainly instances where you need more than thirty days.
Well, they'll come and store the pod for you on their property.
Yeah, we started at ninety days, and then at the January meeting, went down to thirty, I don't, I think the ninety days was just excessive, that was too generous for, right, by right.
Just to get back to the size issue, I just did the math real quick, and if we went cubic feet, if we look at the largest pod available, it's a thousand twenty-four cubic feet.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
That is a lot.
If you know how to pack.
But my point being, maybe that could be our size limit, as opposed to a, you know, eight by eight by sixteen, just, you know, a thousand twenty-four cubic feet, anything bigger than that, you need a permit. If you have two of them, you need a permit, because it exceeds a thousand twenty-four cubic feet. I'm good with that.
That sounds good.
So we just kind of modified a little bit format here. I'm always talking, man, I just...
I know, I know.
Eric doesn't talk to me.
That's the other map.
Man, too, I'm sorry.
Two-point-oh.
Please let somebody tell you to call them, man. So are you okay with, everybody all right with the direction we're going? All right, well, I'm gonna move on to, I'm doing business, small clubs, I haven't seen...
Now we're gonna see that.
I got, I got a call, Eric.
Yes, hi, I'm Eric, um, anyway. So the first one we're gonna talk about is the small clubs, this was discussed a couple of meetings ago, it's regarding, it was, we got an application for a small boating club out on one of the islands, near Harson's Island, and we wanted to make, allow some provisions to distinguish them from the clubs that are currently defined in your ordinance, which are under, like, your recreational facilities ordinance, so if you will turn to page three of your memo, that's where we're gonna find all the new information, and our recommended language. So the first two pages just discuss what you already have, the rec, we would recommend a couple of amendments, one would be to add clubs with thirty or fewer members, subject to section twenty-five-four, as a permitted use in all single-family residential districts, RM and MHP districts. So that is to separate them from the parks and recreation facilities, because that's how your clubs are currently regulated, and we felt there was a difference between a parks and rec facility, and perhaps a small boating, or knitting, or whatever kind of club is taking place. So the first would be to add that as a permitted use in residential districts, second would be to amend section twenty-three, or point three-eight, which currently talks about the standards for parks, recreational facilities, public and private, and this is where you, this is what currently regulates your clubs, for, which are, your language is currently geared towards larger, so if you look at number seven, the distance may be reduced by the planning commission on small sites where adequate mitigation is proposed by the applicant, and that's talking about the sanitary facilities, so that would allow you to determine on a case-by-case basis for these small clubs, if they didn't meet that standard, if perhaps it was appropriate to allow it, with, you know, looking at their case, instead of sending them to the ZBA, that would give you some discretion on some of the smaller islands out there, to say, it's not, maybe it's a hundred feet or a hundred and fifty, and you would, that would come before you, and you'd be able to see that. So that would be the first recommendation we would add. The second would be at number eleven there, any sports fields shall be a minimum of one hundred feet from any lot line, and two hundred feet from any dwelling, these setback requirements shall not apply for uses located entirely upon an island with one lot and no road access to the mainland or another island. So that gets very specific to say, you know, we'll know that when we see it, obviously there's no vehicular access, so that's, that's one we would recommend adding in there, and then the entire number thirteen there, so that underlying text, we would propose adding vehicular access shall be provided primarily to and from a major thoroughfare as designated in the Clay Township master plan, this requirement shall not apply to small island, to a small island that does not contain roads, and has only access via boat traffic. The planning commission may also approve a site that has vehicular access primary to and from a collector road or local road, if a finding is made by the planning commission that the traffic generated by and the use of the subject site is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and will not have a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and the township. So that, so these provisions that we've added in here were sort of in response to your, our discussion last meeting about how you were mentioning that, just because it has thirty members, doesn't mean it's only thirty people, it could be, maybe it's, every member brings a friend, and I'd have sixty people. So we wanted to give you the discretion to sort of hear what the type of use was, and you obviously know the township best, and determine, just basically give you a little more oversight into, into these. And then the final addition is that we would add a new section twenty-point-five-for clubs with fewer members to read as follows, so all requirements of section twenty-point-three-eight shall apply, so those are the standards we just looked at, one through thirteen on the previous page. The minimum lot size shall be two acres, the applicant shall provide information regarding the maximum number of guests and the members that may be on-site at one time, this number may be capped, and hours of operation may be limited by the planning commission after review of parking, boat access, sensitivity of adjacent land uses, proposed activities on-site, road condition and capacity, other public services and utilities, and similar factors. And then, the planning commission may also require reasonable screening and buffering features to mitigate potential negative impacts to adjacent and nearby land uses. This may include, but not be limited to, trees, bushes, walls, fences, additional setbacks, and similar features. So again, that would give you just more oversight on a case-by-case basis, if it comes in and it meets most of the standards, and what if you felt maybe some screening, or some other standards needed to apply, you'd have oversight over that.
My first impression, that if you have twenty-nine members on a two-acre parcel, with two guests per member, you're indeed doodoo, so we would almost have to, as that comes in front of the planning commission, limit the number of guests, the number of...
Yeah, I mean, you could limit it based on how many bathroom facilities are on-site, or...
Two acres is not much.
Yeah, and that's, again, this was based on...
That's why that's in there, I understand, just looking at the numbers, though, that's, that's touchy, because there's a lot, just north of us there, that's about one-point-two acres or whatever, you add point eight more, and to put forty-five people and the sanitary stuff and all that on there will help you. So we would have to do a lot of looking and researching, if it came.
I think that would be covered under section three of the...
Yeah, we'd have to do a lot of that.
And I think that's where you were talking about case-by-case.
Yeah, yeah, so you'd be, you'd know, like, the case that, what kind of prompted this, was somebody requested, small island, two acres, and there's one cottage on it, and, you know, it felt like this would be an appropriate use for there, but it's not permitted in your, in your ordinance right now, so we wanted to, and again, we talked about it, and we hope this incorporated the comments that we heard last time, as far as, I think we talked, two acres was generally what was settled on, and thirty members, so if there's any additional, you know, standards you'd like to, you'd like to see explored, we're happy to look at those, but that's what we came up with.
I keep laughing when I hear the commercial about these awnings, now you can use them at night, too, when you have lights under there. Have they been on Harson's Island after eight PM?
I have not now.
And that's the same thing here with the small club, you have to have something to prevent the mosquitoes from carrying you away, so, but that's, that's not, we don't care.
Sunset. What can you do, is like math, there's gotta be, I got X amount of people, so I need X amount of drain field, and that's gonna be this big, and, you know...
Or to help department that.
Yeah.
We're looking at, I mean, is it gonna be called a clubhouse, because then we got your fire marketing, how many people are in the house at one time?
Well, if you have a building there, it's got to be built, too.
It's gotta be, you know, how many people hold thirty maximum?
It's gonna be just by boats, right? Probably all have their own facilities onboard, majority of them.
And we're gonna address any hours of operation?
Definitely, yeah. We'd have to...
That would be covered in number three as well, we do have, hours of operation may be limited, so you would know what they are, and you'd have a chance to comment on them.
Well, looks, looks good.
Well, is there any more comments that the planning commission members want to see? Because this was something was brought to us because of a specific request.
This was fast-tracked, I believe is the correct term, that it was asked that we...
Well, I wouldn't mind at all having a club on an island, I mean, that's great, and you have some as you go along the river.
Yes.
It's when you start talking about having it between two houses.
So, and that's where, again, that could be your, since it's in number thirteen there, it says, the planning commission may also approve a site that has vehicular access, so if, if the site has vehicular access, and you don't, you think it's too much, that's your justification for saying it's too close to neighbors, it's gonna, that's, that's why that's in there, so it, it's designed for the small islands, but it could also apply, we didn't wanna, under the right circumstances, it might be appropriate for a mainland or...
Well, we have a couple of those so-called clubs along the South Channel, they don't have a building, they come by boats.
And this may already be happening.
Yeah.
Just give you some standards for it.
And they can spend the night, too, right, is that, I'm assuming that's what they would do.
It's, it's a residential, I, but I believe that they would be allowed to, it's a residential area, I'm sure that there's other areas of the ordinance that would cover, you know, camping on it and things like that.
There's no camping in Clay Township.
So, so no.
Or rent a house.
Ranches, or like that horseshoe bay, we like to go.
Yeah.
Crystal Inn?
Yeah, we have to be very careful with what we put in here, and then make sure that we, without getting too much flack, can put the restrictions on there based on the ordinance as it is in here, that, that's all we can work with.
You know, it's an outdoor, it's a residential area, it's a whole, whole different ballgame. Now it's, you're talking a club. I mean, I can go to my house and say, hey, why don't you come on over?
You can invite me.
No, you can't.
But I have number thirteen covers this in there, so this particular point, this is a proposed amendment to our ordinance.
So I guess, moving forward, I would say, are there any concerns that we, you'd like us to look into with this language, or anything that's not covered? Anything want removed?
We'll leave it all in there, please.
Leave it all, leave it in.
And our next up would be...
Would be to say a public hearing, if you, if you would want to approve this language, then it'd be the, the next regular meeting.
So what's the planning commission members like to do?
Let's do it. Well, the island is waiting.
Fast-tracked.
Fast-tracked, so I, right now, the island's only one acre.
Why have an acre?
They don't make it.
But they can park all the way around the island, so that's no concern, and they don't bring any cars over there, so we don't have to worry about any of that.
Worry about the ferry, yeah.
We can't get on the ferry, no. No, I, I think if you feel that this language will fit into our ordinance, I almost feel that we ought to have a public hearing. Announce it.
And at that point, you can hear what the public has to say, that's not permanent, if you hear comments during that time, you can revise based on that, or if you wanna do a little homework and come back, you wanna think about it for a little while, and at the public hearing, you decide you want it to be tweaked.
I think, I think why you brought it up, we wanna make sure that we don't contradict any other ordinance that we have out there concerning, you know, and we named a few, the horseshoe and the, and Crystal Inn, and make sure we don't...
And, and those, just off the top of my head, are vehicular accessible, and you could say no, and it's right there in the language, because it's not, it's too close to other people, and that would be your, and those are also, I know that...
Yeah, poor ones.
Someone would have to make a motion.
I move.
You did?
Yes, except, I have a public hearing, don't go home.
It'd be June twenty-sixth.
I know.
Okay, that's a continuation of our, the public hearing?
It is, yeah.
We, we have not received any traffic study scopes yet, so it hasn't, let's just, the traffic study hasn't started yet?
Quite hasn't started.
You will not be acting on that in June.
Okay, let me ask you this, since we set it, quote, unquote, for a date certain, June twenty-sixth, do we at least have to, as short as it may be...
You will have to, it'll be on the agenda, and you'll have to postpone to, at this point, it might be worth talking to the applicant, if he, if he shows up, or I can get in touch with him and say, July, August, and just postpone to, you could do it every month, and just have it on there, and it'll take one minute to say, we're gonna postpone to next month, or you could do two, three months.
Can we postpone every month, and suddenly it just never happens?
You'd get in some trouble, so...
We're not gonna get in trouble, no, I guess, let me be clear about it, because there was a lot of public participation at the first public hearing, I would hate for the public who really wants to be here and shows up for one minute, because, guess what, we don't have traffic study, we don't have X, Y, and Z, we need, I guess I'm trying to avoid, um...
Having all those people show up, and then...
If you want to, that's great, but I don't want them to show up and then go, why didn't you tell us?
And we say, welcome to your master plan meeting, here we go.
And I don't have a problem with that, unfortunately, I don't want them not to be informed.
Yes, I, so I guess the...
Is there any next door, or Facebook, or the township uses, that they put out information?
Um, you don't have all the people on next door.
Word of mouth and grassroots.
How about the sign out in front, and our website for the township will say this is...
You can try, you don't have to be in your, you can try to let people know.
No, I would, I know we don't have to, because we made it very clear, but I'm just trying to be conscientious of...
There's a lot of people.
I will...
Somehow I have a feeling if we did postpone the public hearing on Blue Horseshoe, that it would, word would probably get out, just a hunch.
But it was a...
Just a hunch.
I'm not requesting anybody on a hunch to do anything at this point.
So I guess what I would suggest is I'll reach out to the applicant and see what his anticipated timeframe is, and I'll explore what type of information can be posted related to, there's gonna be no action on this, you know, it's gonna be postponed, if there's, whatever legally can be done to communicate that, the only reason I lean towards continuing that is because it sounded like, based on the public's reaction, the notices didn't really, they went out to all the legal property owners, but there are obviously a lot more people that, so even closing the public hearing and re-noticing it, it would only, it would still be the same people, and you'd still hear the same types of, so I'll get some information related to that, and see what we can provide to the public to say, here's when... to say, here's when action will be discussed about this.
That, I wanted that first because I'm assuming that's gonna be, we had all that information at the next hearing, I'd rather avoid the hearing, public hearing.
I would imagine, but yeah, I, we haven't, to my knowledge, we have not, I've not received any requests for a traffic study scope or anything like that, so...
So at this particular point, with that further information, I would feel more comfortable if we set this public hearing for a date, it was June something?
June twenty-sixth, was that meeting, yes.
So I'm sorry for interrupting, but that's...
No, that was, it's a good...
That's very good. Right now, legally, this thing has been extended to public hearing, essentially, right?
For the horseshoe project? Yes, yes, the public hearing is actually open right now.
Still going on.
Posted, yeah.
And so, isn't there a means where we can indicate that no action will be taken on that meeting until further notice? But we don't wanna mail it, do we?
Well, you're not gonna mail it. It would be probably like on the agenda or just a notice. I don't know exactly, I haven't dealt with this.
We have to put it on the agenda.
Particular scenario, yeah, I know it has to be on the agenda, I'm just wondering what other information.
Usually the applicant would submit something in writing saying they request an extension to the next meeting, and then you have that to show people.
So I'm going to request that, if you can communicate. So we don't wait till the last minute and people make different arrangements. I know we don't reach a hundred percent of people, I get that, but after the attendance at the last...
Absolutely, yeah.
I would like to do the best we can so people show up for the master plan, that's great.
Yes, yes, yes.
But you could put it on the board on the front.
On the board, on our website, yes, it'll be fine. And I'm obviously in the agenda.
I'll, yeah, Lynn, as Eric mentioned, I'll see if I can get something in writing from him saying, please postpone, and that way, if everyone does show up, you would have a date, you would say, you know, it's gonna be ready in the end of August, we're gonna go for September, and then everyone would be here to hear it.
And that was the further question I was gonna have, if he has a date, maybe it's not July, maybe it's August.
I don't, I'm, my understanding is it's a sixteen to ninety day process to do the study. So June, July, so August would be probably the earliest.
I just wanna make sure we have communication back and forth so that we have a paper trail to say that we didn't, you know, dot our i's across our t's and everybody's informed where we're going with it.
Yes, yes.
I seem to remember that some of the people were complaining that they heard from neighbors who weren't, bite it, and so they should do that.
Yeah.
They should do that.
I'm sorry.
Regarding that traffic study...
Yeah.
There was in the master plan, there was, contains a traffic study from what was created. I know it's outdated.
It's a little seven, eight years old now, but yeah, no, there is. If you look at our master plan, which we all should have looked at by now, there are all those master plan, you know, traffic studies, I totally agree with you.
All the incidents, you know, for like over a five-year period. I mean, it's worth something.
Oh, yeah.
There's nothing.
No, it's...
I think the big thing with the traffic study, though, is it, it looks at what the project would do to those numbers as well. So that's, they might use those updated numbers as their baseline and then say, all right, if you add, you know, three hundred cars in a two-hour period trying to make, you know, a certain turn, what does that do to those numbers? And what was the likelihood that the crashes would increase? So I think that, I was actually looking through today and I saw those. And then obviously, there's the boat aspect.
Right.
Okay, again, I digress, I mean, there's something else that I wanted to...
Good talk.
Okay, so...
Back to Whitey's motion.
Back, yeah, Whitey's motion.
Thank you, I made it.
I'll make it, yeah, would you please?
Move to place the club. The zoning amendment for small clubs onto a public hearing. Schedule a public hearing for the review of the ordinance regarding zoning agreement for small clubs.
For June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth.
Second?
Second.
You did.
All right, second. Horseshoe over there, sorry. You got that, Sue? All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Cool.
All right.
All right.
We're gonna move on to item number D, short-term rental.
This one, well, it's been a little while and we were reminded that we never really, I don't know if we tied the knot on this one or not, so I'll go on to bring it back up and just put it before you again. I know the last time we talked, I don't know, I know we started it in September, it might have been last year, though. But, so essentially, what I'm looking for here is, we provided what the language could, would look like in your, in your ordinance based on some of the things that we had talked about. Those are in, if your packets are colorized, they're in green. If not, they are italicized. So those would be some of the items for discussion. I do believe we also talked about just doing nothing for the time and waiting because this is particularly focusing on ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. Do not believe you've had any permits pulled for those. So I don't know that it's gonna be an issue this summer. I don't know what anyone else has heard, but we just wanted to bring it back up before you to see if there was any, any action. And the other item, the other option is to discuss this as part of your master plan when you talk about housing and providing recreational opportunities and tourism to see what the community's input and feeling on that is.
The only thing that I noted on page two, the second line from the top, to add a second story to a boathouse, I don't know how that would go over. I remember somebody had to tear down the boathouse that was a little by, many, many years ago. And I think so.
I think that's already in your ordinance.
It is?
Yes, that language is already in there. I believe, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, that is more referring to existing boathouse structures and anything that was coming before you for this, you would have, again, insight and regulation over.
Was there something going on with this data on this? I thought I could've sworn there was something on radio on the other day.
It changes every day, actually.
They were talking about decks on the boathouses and, you know, noble...
Virgin legislature, legislative action urged, action request to call or write today. There was a bill in front of our people regarding the different regulations regarding rentals. And apparently, they wanna be sure that all ordinances are examined on both rentals and residential units.
For short and long-term rentals and...
Yeah, and so I don't know how that would impact us when we talk about these...
I haven't seen it, I know there was legislation last year and I heard that it died at the end of the year, so this might be...
This is a new one that...
This one was for May first of this year. And they're gonna take testimony regarding amending, Bill seeks to amend Michigan zoning enabling act to preempt governments from regulating short-term rentals.
So with that, if that's being discussed at the state level right now, I suppose I might suggest that we, no action. Let's get some public input on it while we do our master plan stuff. And once that's adopted, we can put all of this together and take a look at it. And to make, obviously, when things like that come out, we do, you know, if it's something that we see, even if we're not talking about it in the last year or so, we would come to you and say, hey, your ordinances needs to be amended to align with state guidelines.
And I have no clue why I got that email.
I, why didn't I get it?
It's Whitey said it to me, I know why I got it.
I know, but I didn't know why I got it.
So this one, I think, we're gonna hold off on until further notice, we're gonna say. A date uncertain.
We can discuss it during the master plan, but we'll see what this date's doing.
But official zoning action will be visited.
Yeah, that's what I thought when I heard it on radio, they were talking about it, I said, ooh.
Because if they, if it passes, it sounds like it takes it out of our realm, I need municipalities' realms to decide one way or the other what to do with these. They're gonna tell us what to do.
Yes, yes.
So we might as well wait and see what they do first, does that make sense?
Yes, we can line up with them.
And as we always talked about before, it's, through our knowledge, it's not a huge problem right now. So maybe we don't need to go creating problems.
I think you, appreciate it.
Yes.
Well, how about we move on to item number eight, which is planning consultant's report.
Did you receive our newsletter that's in there? So that would be our report.
Wait a minute, it looks like he wants to say something.
We passed out a draft survey for the master plan.
Oh, yeah.
Take that home and look at that, let us know if you have questions. And then we'll wait to get your opinion on the survey. This'll be something, it'll be online-based, and it'll also be something that people can mail in to township, to the building department if they can do it online. And then we'll leave the survey open as long as possible within that first phase of public input. And then we'll shut it off a month or two months, we'll leave that out there and try to get as many responses as we can. So that includes survey questions modeled on master plans from nearby anchor bay communities. And at the end, is part, it's a copy of the survey that St. Clair County Planning did for the inch debate, GAP study that's almost complete. So that'll be nice because we could compare that with local township info, so the input they received, as long as they make that, those survey results available. We have the notice of intent to plan, Cindy mailed that out, so that's all set. And then we're looking at a joint meeting date of June nineteenth for the planning commission, township board, and DDA.
It's a third Wednesday.
Has been scheduled, not yet.
We're gonna let everyone know, we're letting you know first.
We wanna make sure we could, just like ten people were on vacation that week.
Online, fillable?
It'll be online and...
Fillable?
Yes, survey marketing.
Yeah, okay.
June nineteenth, Wednesday, the joint, potentially, you're in check with the rest of them.
And then earlier, possibly like six o'clock, six-thirty maybe instead of seven, in case it goes longer, that's possible, it's just a suggestion. Usually we hold those closer to when people are coming back, right back from work.
It's just people working.
Doesn't have to be, it's just...
Can you get?
Tom, can you do it?
What's that, six-thirty, can you make it?
Or six, because I go with Brooke, yes.
It'll be tough, but I can be here.
Six-thirty or six?
Six-thirty.
I can, yeah. I'm more concerned about him.
There's a lot of traffic on the whole island. It's been unbelievable. I've got a bunch of time, I gotta get myself to get anywhere, though.
So you're, you're...
I know.
You're okay if we tried for the six-thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six o'clock, I definitely need a three.
Well, don't you have flex time?
Until they want something done.
But you're gonna talk to the rest of them first?
We'll have to confirm with the DDA and the board, too, but if that's okay with you, then we'll start with that.
Isn't that the, when's the regular scheduled meeting for DDA? Is that that day?
No, that's earlier, isn't it?
I think so, I think there's a DDA that's already scheduled that day.
Yeah, that's why we have to take that way in Wednesday.
Do you have agenda items yet?
There is, there are DDA cases pending.
For that, for that day?
Okay. You're gonna have to pick another day.
Does anybody have a suggestion, July?
No, July, I gotta remember, the fourth is coming, so it would have to be a week after that, at least.
Okay, let me ask you this, do you know if the June twenty-sixth meeting, our regular meeting?
It's in Virginia, but it's the first week of, the first weekend.
You're gonna fight out from the Kinskey Island, I feel it's going with that. Do you know if we have anything else that's coming for that?
Yes, we just said it's a public hearing.
Well, that's...
You'd wanna do the meeting beforehand lightly and leave enough time, so that might need to be like six o'clock, keep it to an hour. And then you're gonna join the board and they'll need to be there for the public hearing.
But you can't make six o'clock.
I'll try, I'll make it six o'clock.
On the twenty...
Six.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'll try, I'll...
Six, twenty-six.
So how about this, show up whenever you can, Sam.
Emergency phone call.
Do you want to give a note so you can get out early? I'm not sure you have any pull on, but...
Yes, Tom's might, my boss is the planning commission chairman for Oxford.
Maybe give a little sip to people.
We'll look at some other dates, that might be pushed in on the time with the planning commission meeting right after.
Do other days of the work, we can work for other...
A lot of these are terrible for me.
It's like if we just did like Tuesday, before, like Tuesday, the, what would that be?
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth. Is that...
A June?
I just, I just wanna, I don't know that that's gonna work for everyone, so I'm just, is a Tuesday completely out or could we look at a Tuesday perhaps?
Tuesday would be fine with me as long as it isn't a Monday.
All right, so now I'm hearing no Mondays.
No Monday, can't do Monday.
I mean, I could do Tuesday, Wednesday.
No Thursdays?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna, we'll have some Tuesdays, because I know we have to...
I gotta cross off the nineteenth and June, we're gonna go look for a Tuesday, how's that?
Go look for a Tuesday.
Go for a Tuesday, and then you don't get a note to get out early. Can't be the first Tuesday. Oops, glad you're here to tell us, Sam.
I would say, suggest maybe Tuesday, the eighteenth, then, if that could work.
I'm good with it, that's fine.
Does anybody else know? Do you know anything?
What time?
Eight.
Seven o'clock, then, being it's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Six-thirty.
Let's do six-thirty.
Let's do six-thirty.
We're changing the day.
No, I was thinking of...
No, six-tackle, we can do six-thirty, six is a problem.
Tuesday, six-thirty, can you make it?
It'll work.
That's no, no, Tuesday.
No what?
No, no.
No, no, Tuesday.
So what was the agreed by late?
The eighteenth of June.
Six-eighteen, nineteen.
I've got so many cross-overs here.
Me, too, I don't know what I can read at any...
Okay, Tuesdays are taco Tuesdays, you bring the tacos.
Yes. It's the eighteenth, Tuesday, isn't it?
Right, Tuesdays are tacos, so...
I love tacos.
Okay, you're taking, you're bringing the tacos, for tonight.
I'm eating the tacos.
I'm eating the tacos.
Up in, uh...
I'm still waiting for someone to buy me a coffee maker.
Two bucks each.
They're doing better.
That's what they are.
Where?
Are they good?
Yeah, very good.
Okay. You are now in charge of giving the time. All right, are you guys gonna check with the rest of the board, send for Tuesdays?
We're gonna check with everyone else.
Tentative.
Tentative.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was...
Yes.
Anything else from our planners?
I know that we're gonna be doing a drive around the township as part of our research to look at some areas, so if anybody has anything, we should definitely go visit in person.
Bring in a lot of pumps.
Good or bad.
As what? What were you looking at?
I'm, uh, what do you...
What are we looking at, the focus areas for a beach case?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Take a tour with Artie, he always has things to show us, so just start to...
You know, and maybe if there's places you see people riding bikes that are dangerous, you think, maybe we should look at some infrastructure there.
And twenty-nine?
What, that's on our list, we'll be...
One fifty-four.
Yes, so...
One fifty-four.
Just, just, yeah.
No, 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 no.
Don't get Whitey started on that one.
Dickie Earl missed part of it, and when we went there, they told us, maybe in about ten years, when we have to work on M-154, you have three foot on each side, three feet on each side, and that's sufficient.
That's for Canadian Ds.
Well, that's besides the point.
You know, I find kinda odd, well, maybe it's funny, maybe it's just me. We're gonna, you know, focus on San Suzy and for each fight, but then we got a guy that wants to invest in another area that's, you know, so we're looking over there, and we got people wanting to spend money over here.
Again, everybody should probably review the master plan before we get going.
We, we don't have a central area.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's gonna be that way, it's gonna be...
You don't have a downtown, you don't have...
And if you have clusters, that'll be just as good, though.
You know, in the old days, they used to have that, that trolley that ran up and down here.
Well, they now have these pedal trolleys where you can drink beer.
Yeah.
So, they have some now where you, um, it's in like, uh, St. Clair Shores and Detroit, and they're tiki huts that float.
Yeah, yeah, that float, yeah.
And you can, you don't have to pedal though, you just go on and drink, and they have Coast Guard designated routes that go from, I mean, it's a mile or something, and you just drift on a tiki hut out in the middle of the...
That's a lot less work.
They call those pachyloids, something.
No, no, we used to drift on little duckies, didn't we?
Well, boy, we're a little... Okay, we're gonna go on to item number nine, CBA Representatives Report.
Okay, we had two appeals at the last, uh, this meeting, uh, Wednesday, May 15th, both on Colony Drive ironically, 7756, and 8,000 Colony Drive, 7756, uh, the gentleman requested an, uh, variance in the waterfront setback to add an ADA-compliant bedroom and bathroom. He was a disabled veteran, the appeal was approved. Um, the second one, 8,000, is the only corner lot on Colony Drive, and he again also requested a 10-foot variance from the waterfront setback based on the odd shape and corner configuration of his lot, and the fact that the HOA had required a dual front yard setback, which kinda tied his hands as to where he could build a house. So, based on the fact that it wasn't self-created hardship and due to the size of the lot, that was also approved.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Um, item number 10 is Board Representatives Report.
Uh, we have, uh, appointed a new code enforcement officer, Shannon Murray, who comes from Ira Township, and looking forward to his, uh, inputs and write-ups. And is he gonna be full-time or part-time? He's part-time, 20 hours a week, same as the other one. Okay.
And isn't it two days, Thursdays and Fridays, I saw?
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Yeah, something like that. Couple of days.
My mom always says Tuesdays and Thursdays, four days.
I thought I had heard somewhere that he'd be also working on Saturdays, but did I hear wrong?
I did not hear that.
No, he wants to, for free.
He hasn't, he isn't invited to the planning commission at some point in time, so...
Still good.
A while later, boy.
He may not wanna come.
You didn't tell him why, did you? Good, don't do that.
Feel surprised.
All right.
You're in the public hearing.
Any other comments, Mark?
That's it, thank you.
I'm...
Oh, please. Item number 11 is Chairperson's Report. I really don't have anything to report, other than thank everybody for showing up and working hard on all of the items we have going here, so... Item number 12, Planning Commission Members' Comments.
Yeah, who has the $2 tacos?
So, oh, with the French fry on it.
Yeah, well, you can do them like that too, yeah.
I just expect tacos, I don't care what...
No, I would just like to thank Matt and Matt, or Eric and Eric, for the wonderful job they did in presenting all that paper, and in plenty of time, too.
I'll second that.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Name tags, name tags.
Name tags.
It might get just your map, or you wouldn't need a name tag.
But that would be too far away for us to recognize.
Sorry, guys. Okay, item number three is Public Comments. Any comments for the public, please come to the podium, state your name and address. I'm sure you know the normal rules, we read about three minutes, six minutes, all that stuff.
What?
About three minutes, six minutes, they, you know...
Depends on how much input you wanna mine out, which...
Lots.
Track like number one, shipping containers start at 20 foot. So, a little bit tidbit. All right, on the, uh, composting.
Actually, hold on just a minute, could you state your names for the record, please, and address?
Mark Pizora, 9034 Phil Grove.
Sandra Pizora, St. Adress.
Thank you.
Well, number, number one on, uh, that I wrote down on, this whole deal on composting, I seen that they were talking about environmental study and that, I think there should be a timeline on how long before this project would be started, and how, how many years before the, uh, environmental study should be on it, like, one year before, you know, you know, five, 10 years before, because the ground does change. Especially with something like that's under consideration in a landfill. So, the...
It should have current study that's not listening to the old...
Just a suggestion. And then, uh, let's see. Oh, all right. The two parcels at under 15 acres that would be considered, both have a 77-foot frontage. How would you determine your length, width, and all that? Now, it just, I'm bringing up stuff that you should consider.
You, you had made the comment, you know, when you've got a thousand foot that's only got 100-foot width, how do you control it? Well, when you've only got 77 foot...
You can.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta do it in your figuring. And then we were, uh, let's see, figuring, um, nothing, yes, you guys were talking about. The one site, the landfill has nothing, yes, problem already to start with, we're gonna compound it, put it up by a, if we put a composting on it. Which is a fire hazard. Let's see...
Plus it's a health and safety issue to the public, anybody breathing it?
Yeah, because there was considerations in there for elderly, uh, facilities, uh, school, well, it should comply to the, uh, public too, that live around it, that would be around at 724 in some instances. All right, and then, uh, I don't know why we're set on the 15 acres. You know, I know you have to legally have a parcel or somewhere that it can be put that meets your criteria. We have 32 acres, that meets the criteria.
You could set it at 30 acres and...
Be legal.
Be legal.
Let's see, I'm sure... And then, the other comment I was thinking, anyone that, um, sets these regulations up, I doubt if any of them live near a landfill, or not a landfill, but a, a composting facility. And then who would be enforcing this, just a code enforcement?
That would be the assumption of my apartment.
All right, let's see, I just worry about his knowledge.
Sure. My comments are, I've been doing the township's composting for the last eight years, I've taken the two containers for the last eight years. Just that little bit of compost, it's very difficult to deal with, there's no way to control the smell. His youngest son lives over on Rachel. I get a phone call every single time I turn that pile, "Will you stop flipping the compost pile? You're making us sick." So, they're smelling it from Fruit Road to Rachel, and that's just our two bins from this township, no one else's. If you allow a composting facility near residential and they start bringing in waste from other municipalities, what is it going to smell like? And I'll give you an example, my excavator operator, Burr, and I were out there, him and the 375 excavator, me and my loader, with the doors and windows closed to avoid the smell. We both got out of the machines and went fruit up because the smell was so bad, trying to flip the pile. This is not something this community needs. It, it, it's going to be something that, once it's here, you're gonna regret it. Property values are going to go down, no one wants to live in it, I certainly don't, and I own the biggest majority of property around the site that's being considered. We're trying to put 225 homes in that site. That's not gonna happen if this is there, because no one's gonna wanna live by it. Absolutely no one will.
It's long-term projection.
So, you know, the values are gonna go down, you're gonna lose tax base, and because, you know, if the home values go down, taxes go down on what you're gonna be able to collect. And Indian Summer Recycling, I called them today, they're over on 26 and Beefway, they will take the township's compost as a municipality for $18 a ton. And then that's not in our neighborhood, it's in their neighborhood. They've already got a composting facility going.
One other thing is, is that, we were approached quite a few years ago to take, uh, compost from, like, West Bloomfield, Rochester, they'll ship it all the way up here. We could've made 100 to 200 grand a month. It's that much money in that business.
I refused, I refused to put this township through that because of the smell. Just the little bit I dealt with with ours, I would not put this township through it.
Yeah, one gravel drain of compost is $900 to dispose of. Now, once a facility like that's in, they can hire a whole lot of attorneys for that kinda money that they're bringing in. So, that's a big thing to consider.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
Well, obviously, we're just looking at visiting.
Whitey wants to say something.
I was just asking, do you know about the one that I'm talking about when I used to drive from here west, somewhat north of here, where they had a composting facility, or maybe they were just planning to have one, and it was denied? I don't remember.
Farm fields smell real bad, too.
No, no, they had signs, "No composting here along that whole road," anywhere between 30 and 35 mile going east. Do you know about anybody there? Okay, thank you, I must...
I don't, I don't get, I don't get out that way.
We don't, we don't get out much. We're, we're too busy.
Yeah, I'd say we're, we stay in the community mostly. But the one at 26 and, uh, that Indian Summer, that's right days, even if you have it smell for miles.
And I just went out, I was gonna bring a bucket of the compost in from last year from the township, so you guys could smell it.
Thank you.
But I chose not to, 'cause, yeah, I mean, a year later, it still smells badly.
Does it take that long?
It, I just flipped the pile today to try to bring some into you, and, oh. And that was from last year, I haven't had any come in this year.
It takes a couple of years to break down.
It takes a couple of years to break down. I've got a pile that's sitting on the property of the pit right now, from three years ago, that's just now broke down. And I flip it regularly, you have to mix sand in with every, every bit that comes in, you have to put sand in it to break it down, and lime in it to break it down. If you don't do that, it's not gonna break down, and it's just gonna sit there and smoke and ferment and smell and...
Yeah, it's a big cost to bring sand in if you don't have it on the site. The person that does it has to have the assets to, the monetary money behind them to do it.
We're just really asking this board to please give this some serious consideration on what you'll do to this community if you allow this, on a parcel less than 20 acres.
Well, we appreciate your comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll take it in consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commission members. My name is Cindy Valentine, I live at 3523 Fruit Street. Um, I would kindly just like to remind all of us, um, of our mission and vision statements here at the township. Sometimes we get lost in the weeds, no pun intended, um, trying to be just and fair, however, the township does have a higher standard. The mission statement is to protect, preserve, promote, improve the quality of life in our community by providing leadership and services reflecting the pride and values and the vision of Clay.